You still get a little bit of this.
That's right, that's right.
It's different. So that's sometimes why I look back on 97.
It is, um, I don't know if we're on yet, are we on? Hello, hello?
Hello.
Okay, it is, it is four o'clock. We'll call the, um, uh, May 5th, 2014 meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
At this time, those who are available to do so, um, if you would stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move on to awards and proclamations.
The week of May 3rd through May 11th, 2014, as Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Salina, Hank Boyer, Chair, Convention and Tourism Committee, and Sylvia Rice, Visiting Salina Director, will read the proclamation.
Hello.
Hi, Commissioners, Mayor. 2014 Kansas Tourism Week, whereas travel matters deeply to the economic prosperity of Salina, of Kansas, of the nation, as well as to business wealth and to comfort and pleasure of individual travelers, and whereas tourism is responsible for creating 4.4 percent of the total Kansas gross state product and is the third largest industry in the state, based on economic development, and whereas travel to and within Kansas provides significant economic benefits for the state, generating $5.8 billion in economic output in 2011, with $4.5 billion in direct benefit to core tourism industries, while spurring an additional $1.3 billion in economic enhancement to indirect industries, and whereas travel is among Kansas' largest private sector employers, supporting 128,000-plus core industry jobs in 2011, an increase of 7.8 percent more than 2009, and additional 19,580 indirect jobs were supported by core tourism activity, and whereas traveler's spending generated 14.4 percent of all Kansas state and local tax revenues, resulting in a tourism tax contribution average of $917 per Kansas household, and whereas leisure and business travel taken in Kansas spurs countless benefits to travelers' creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, relationships, and wellness, and whereas 2011 tourism expenditures contributed $245 million to the economic wealth of Seline County, and whereas in 2011, tourism represented a 3.5 percent share of the total Seline County expenditures, and tourism expenditures in Seline County represented a 3.2 percent share of total state tourism expenditures, recording a growth of 8.8 percent over 2010, and whereas travel is a catalyst that moves local, state, and national economics forward. And now, therefore, I, Aaron Householder, Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim May 3 through 11, 2014, as Travel and Tourism Week in Salina, Kansas, and urge the citizens of Salina to join me in this special observance with appropriate events and commemoration.
Thank you. What events do you have planned this week? You guys taking trips somewhere?
No, that's not a bad idea. Actually, we just took a trip somewhere. Thank you for the opportunity. We really kicked off Tourism Week in a big way. Uh, we did take a trip. We took a trip to Womigo, Kansas, and we participated in the Kansas Sampler Festival, where we worked with local partners that included Saline Arts and Humanities, and Parks and Recreation, and Kenwood Cove, the Bicentennial Center, Rolling Hills Zoo, um, the Salina Community Theater, the Stiefel Theater, uh, the River Festival, uh, and also with Lindzenberg and McPherson, and created the Heart of Kansas Tent. Um, Womigo was the smallest community to ever have hosted the Sampler Festival in 25 years. We welcomed over 12,000 people, almost 12,000 people through their gates, which is a record setter. So, we spent two beautiful days, one a little warmer than the other, but two beautiful days talking about all there was to see and do in, in, um, this part of the state. Salina Downtown Inc. did a phenomenal job in representing all of the food industries in our communities, our specialty foods. On Saturday, we did little samples of Cozy's, and on Sunday, we did little samples from Martinelli's and from El Atron. It was a great weekend. So, that's how we kicked off Tourism Week. Uh, today, we're kicking off a local campaign. We talk a lot in our reporting about what tourism does in our economy, and one of the challenges we've always had is really tracking who our visitors are, and so we're officially kicking off our "What Brings You to Visit Salina?" campaign, so that the desk clerks at the hotels, who have already really started this, can remember to ask that question, "What brings you?" If they're not wearing shin guards for a soccer tournament, and they're not wearing square dance studs, sometimes it's kind of hard to tell, and so we're trying to expand that, that sort of, uh, memory tickler to them, to our attractions and so forth. We've got representatives from the tourism industry with us, we've got hoteliers here, we've got attractions folks here, we've got our partners from the Bicentennial Center and others to help us kick that off. Uh, we'll also start a secret visitor program this week, where we'll have folks going out and kind of testing their knowledge about, "I've got an eight-year-old with me, what is there to see and do in your area?", and to see if those front desk clerks, those wait staff folks, can answer those questions and reward them on the spot. So, that's what we're doing this week, among the things we just do all the time.
Great ideas. It's very important, obviously, from the tax dollars we can see, and the continuing the research. I know I was on, I didn't make all the meetings, or a little early in the morning, but you did have the best, you had the best breakfast of any of the meetings.
Thanks.
It's, uh, it's, you guys, yeah, you guys do a great, yeah, right, yeah, you guys do a great job in always researching and trying to make things better, we really appreciate. I've got your signed proclamation up here.
Tiffany's got a button for each of you, so that you can all remember in your walks of life to ask folks when you see them on the street, "If you're not from here, what brings you to visit Salina?"
Thanks, Tiffany.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now go into the Citizens Forum part of our meeting. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding, and if, any issues that are not on today's agenda, uh, be sure you give your name and address, and, uh, we normally limit to five minutes. If there's not a lot of people, though, we'll, we'll see, see how that goes. So, anybody who has anything for us, please come forward.
Hello, 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 Judy Larson, 715 North 9th. Um, I am on the committee that is dealing with a petition to expand the county commission of Seline County from three people to five. In order to do this, we need 1,700 signatures, and, and I made a little sign that says, "Sign the petition to expand the county commission", and, uh, I'm putting this up at various places. Um, you have to be a registered voter to sign the petition, and if you're not a registered voter, you can go get registered, and then my phone number is 376-2285. You call me, and I will come bring the petition to you. So, we need to get this done, and we're trying to get, uh, a little more diversity in the commission, and, um, we're working really hard. Um, if any of you know Janice or David Norland, they also have petitions. Randy, what is, what is, uh, her last name? Chelsea, what's Chelsea's last name?
You know, I'm not sure.
Okay, sorry.
She's new to me.
Yeah, yeah, well, she's on the committee too, and I thought, I was trying to think of her name. But anyway, uh, 376-2285, uh, if you want to sign the petition, give me a call, I'll bring it to you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming today. Anyone else with anything they'd like to bring before the commission on any item that is not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of the April 24th, 2014. Uh, item 6.2, authorize staff to solicit bids for the Vortex Avenue water line, city project number 14-3033. 6.3, award the contract for roof replacement of 11 shelter houses in Lakewood Park, project number 14-3035, to Midwest Siding Inc., in the amount of $23,100. 6.4, award the contract for the 2014 mill and inlay part two to APAC Kansas, in the amount of $447,082.13, plus a 5 percent, 5 percent construction contingency.
Is there any item on the consent agenda that the Commissioner would like to remove or amend from the consent agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd, uh, like to remove 6.2.
Any other items the Commissioner would like to remove?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove 6.3.
6.3, any other items? Okay.
Not a removal, but a change, I believe Monday was April 28th, not the 24th.
Oh, on the minutes?
Yes, on the minutes.
I have my calendar in front of me, but if it is, I won't disagree, so noted, maybe we'll, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, two remaining items on the consent agenda with that date change of April 28th, I guess?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the 6.1 and, I believe, 6.3 on the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Now, we'll go back to, I'm sorry, item 6.2, I believe, is the first one you wanted to pull, is that correct?
6.2, correct.
Would you like me to make a short presentation, or would you just like to ask questions?
Just a short one, please, and I think probably one or two things might be covered in that, and then I have some questions.
Okay. Actually, you have the Vortex Avenue water line project on the screen over there, which would be the same document that's in your packet, but it might be easier to point out a few things. Basically, um, this project came about in line with the Veris Technology facility that was proposed here a few months back, and as we were reviewing this project through the design review team, we, uh, came up with some issues from the standpoint of providing fire protection to the Veris Technologies facility, and, um, so going back in history to give you a little understanding of how this was originally laid out, the original plat for the entire industrial area was done in the late 1980s, and at that time, um, this, this portion here was basically two lots, and the water line traveled, uh, the existing water line was through this portion, and the point at that time was the fire protection and water would be off of the existing water line. Since that time, the lots have been laid out differently, the water line's been relocated, kind of get to the short of it. This water line was related, relocated, uh, for this facility, I think in the 90s, and then just last year, the water line that was ran through this area was relocated around to allow us to set up for this lot for Veris, and then this turned into a second lot. Try to make it, you can't see the lines on there very well, but originally, the property line was in this general area, so this whole piece was one large lot. Now, it's divided up as two lots, as you can probably see closer on there. So, going back to providing, uh, fire protection for Veris and working with the fire department, it became obvious that we really didn't have, uh, a very good way to provide fire protection to Veris with the, uh, two entrances that are right in this location, and Roger Williams and I worked together closely to determine how could we best provide fire protection. Typically, the fire department likes to connect onto the, uh, fire hydrant and then drive to the fire, so, uh, they need two, uh, fire hydrants to provide the protection, so they looked at one of these on Scanlon, and then we needed an additional one at this point. Truly can't get to any of these other fire hydrants that are around the outside because there's just not access to them, so, uh, and then once we started looking at all the different ways we could lay out the line, we chose this route because it provided, uh, fire protection to this lot, uh, this corner right here now is FedEx, you may remember that facility, and then there will be an empty lot right here, so we'll be able to provide fire protection to that, and the entrance in most of these cases, or all of them, we hope, will come off of Vortex, so when they're fighting a fire, fire hydrant on Vortex would be convenient, and that's really what drove us to this layout, um, kind of in a nutshell, and as we were looking at this, we thought the, uh, the funds that we put in the, uh, under the Resolution 11-10-596, this really fit well for that because it was, uh, water and wastewater infrastructure that was necessary to support economic development, and, uh, we can go more into the number of jobs and the dollars, but, um, you may have been involved with that, that was a few months back, but we can provide that information if you're interested. So, that's kind of the short order of how we got here.
Okay. A couple of quick questions, if you can go back to the, to the site plan or the plot, uh, the plat plan. On the, on the water lines there, do we have a general rule? See where the hand is, right there in the middle of the screen, kind of by that connected to existing water?
Right here.
Yeah, there's a, that's a dead end connection there. Is that within, is that like, do we have a standard that we don't want to go beyond a certain length of a dead end, or?
When you say dead end?
Well, that water line goes off of Scanlon there, and it goes to the, um, west.
This is an existing water line tied in down on Waterwell Road, comes up?
Yeah, just a general question, do we have, do we have a standard length that, because we generally want a loop?
Right.
What we're doing is we're accomplishing a loop here, but the property immediately to the north of that has a, has a water line that comes in and kind of ends right there at the building. Is that a different?
The, this is a solid water line that continues on up Arnold, so this is a continuous line.
Right, yeah, that one right there.
Okay, that is basically a fire hydrant lead up to that building, that's correct.
Okay.
And in looking at the information with Roger, we needed, uh, about 20, 250 gallons per minute to fire hydrants, and so we tried to look at, um, if we had any issues with Waterwell Road, what fire protection could we get to this area if this line was out of service, and then this would truly be a long dead end line if it wasn't looped back, and the difference was between 1,200 gallons a minute with this out of service versus, um, having the loop in place, so.
Okay, yeah, 'cause at first glance, I'd just kind of look at if you were to tee that off of that line directly west of these properties, it's about the same distance in that that?
And it would get us to there, but we looked at giving us some redundancy of this tie, tying these loops together in the event the old Waterwell water line, um, was out of service.
Which strengths the entire system?
It does, and it really improved our fire flow protections to this area, plus it gave us some redundancy in the event, and also it gets us, uh, water service for this lot here, and, um, we assume they'll all access, uh, have their entrance off of Vortex, so a fire hydrant out to where they can pull into the facility is what seems favorable to the fire department, so.
Yeah, and this may be a question that you're going to be able to answer, might not be able to answer. Um, in April 2011, when this, when the ordinance was put down and we established that there was, uh, the economic development incentive of providing the $100,000, or whatever the cost would be to, uh, to put water on these projects, uh, that, that's one thing set aside that apparently that was, that was in place, yet in November of last year, when we were looking at a tax rebate incentive for this thing, that wasn't made part of the, that wasn't made part of the information. I feel like there was already incentives provided on this project that weren't, it just seems to me that we need to include all of the incentives when we have the information coming forward about a tax rebate, and, uh, because I have to imagine that we're not obligated to do this, that in some instances, there is a special assessment for, on the individual property owners to provide this, so, um, I see how in 2011, it was determined that this was a reasonable incentive to provide, and that's okay, and I don't, I don't have issue with that, it's just, I would have liked to have that complete information when we were making the decision on the, on the tax rebate, so, can I?
Commissioner, what's, I'm not sure I'm following the context of the location of the tax rebate question. Was that downtown question?
No, 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 that, no, I'm not talking locations here, right now, I'm just talking about, well, the assumption is, is that if you look all around town, that there may be instances where we would say, "This might be a better opportunity to incentivize versus something else."
You're just saying at the time that we addressed the tax exemption for that property, of also at the same time addressing the water question? Is that?
Right, yeah, that, that, I would have liked to have those together so that we would have had the big picture of what the total incentive was, because it kind of seems that this one came in a little bit behind.
Yeah, I'd have to ask, Martha, I don't know with regards to the timing question you mentioned, if at the time that was done, was there an assumption that the rear access to the water was sufficient, or when did the?
It really became more about as we were going through the design review team meeting and, um, started really looking in detail at the fire protection. Now, shit, if we figured that out in advance, you know, we could always say, looking back, that would have been a good idea, but we just didn't really come to that reality until they brought their building plans in and we sorted through all of it, and got everybody in the room at the same time, so.
And so on.
To follow up with that, Commissioners, typically, that's what you would see.
Yes.
You would see a situation in which if there was a private company that's asking for whatever type incentive that we may offer, that all of those are packaged up as a discussion item at that point in time, so that one kind of evolved, unfortunately, but normally, that's what you're asking is what you would expect to see.
And that's what I'd hope to do.
Just when we talk about cost-benefit ratios and Wichita State model and all this other stuff, I just don't know if that has any impact on, would that have any impact on the overall? Do you put it all together and figure out what that is, or?
It would have some. Um, now, given that, I believe there were what, three lots that this serves on the south and west side, and then this also would provide some service to the north, wouldn't it?
Yes, it's set up to provide service to all three lots in here and this existing lot that's empty.
So, so the benefit attributable to, uh, the Veris property, it would be a fraction of that cost, it would probably be a little bit less than a fourth, I would say, because that north lot's a little larger than the others, so there is, there's no question there's some benefit that would typically go into that type of ratio. Um, if it was the only property being served, there'd be more of an impact to it, but since there's, uh, three other lots there, it's probably going to be fairly minor, but there is some.
But, and that's, are the other lots, uh, are they still the ownership of the Airport Authority, are they in private?
I don't know, I'd have to ask that question.
I believe this lot, and Tim Rogers is here, is Airport Authority, and the north is Airport Authority. FedEx is on the one, on the corner. Tim says yes, so.
Okay, great.
And, and, I'm sorry, John.
I'm sorry, and then just my, my general stock question and my concern, and I, and I raised this at the November 18th meeting, was just that I'm concerned that sometimes we provide incentives for other locations in town, and we end up having companies move from one part of town and abandon one location in favor of another location, in which it's, you know, we're kind of cannibalizing ourselves on, on some things like that. I just, you know, I've mentioned it before, and I'm not quite sure what the answer, uh, I didn't have time to look back at the, the video from the meeting, but, uh, my, my concern, again, is that, uh, we're going to have the rest of GeoProbe move out of North Salina and, and establish down here and, and, uh, leave a, leave a gap up there, so, um, I don't know if anybody can address what they know about that, or if they know anything about that, and, and, uh, what maybe, some, what their future plan is for, uh, GeoProbe and Veris being in two different places.
Well, I can definitely say I can't address that. I think that anyone, it'll be speculation, so I'm, I don't believe anyone here today could answer that for you, John.
Okay, and, and just, just so you know, I, I'm completely supportive of the decision made back in 2011 of what they did, I just have those concerns.
And, uh, in conjunction with the fire protection, I think it does provide some overall benefit to the city, to where we have that loop in the event, the other line, so I think it serves more than just the purpose of providing for these three lots, it does some, allows us to improve our fire protection in the area.
Right, and I know that you do that all over town, you're trying to do that too, so.
We try to get the, the most we can out of fire protection, and particularly in these type areas, the, the better the fire flow, we never know what type of facility's going to come in in the future and what they're going to need, so.
Right.
We try to do the best we can at the time we make improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Uh, is, uh, you might, you may or may not know this, I was just curious about, is there a line that defines, um, where economic development and assessment meet, or is that a moving target all the time?
For?
For something like this, for something like this water line. I could make a case for it being an assessment, I guess you could make a case for it being economic development.
Yeah, and initially, it was assessment when the project was first, uh, put into place in the late 80s, and over time, um, just, the lots have been reshaped and reformed to meet the needs, and, uh, looked at this, um, as a very small area and more of an economic development as opposed to the assessment portion, and, um, obviously, the Airport Authority had done a lot as far as locating lines for water and sewer in the future, and had paid assessments for the area.
Do you anticipate any other situations like this on existing airport property?
Not on this property at this point, because it's pretty well laid out, I think.
Yeah, Commissioner, I can, I can add to that, too. If, and Martha, if you can pull up that, or have Melissa pull up that resolution that might get into that.
Okay.
Historically, we've, we've always tried to assess just about any property, either do assessment or what we call a cost recovery, it's a slightly different approach, um, to development, but in, in reviewing the last few years, our approach, we found that, quite honestly, um, you know, sometimes there's a but for from a financial perspective, and sometimes there's a but for, "I'm going to stay where I'm at, and I'm not coming to Salina", or whatever, whatever that issue might be, and so the thinking has evolved more into, uh, the ability to provide, get that lot to, if you want to call it shovel-ready or development-ready, or whatever that is. This is really a small piece, probably a small application or small example of that approach, but, uh, it's basically said, "We have the ability to deal with the key utility questions", uh, and so when this, and if you could, Melissa, if you could, uh, increase that size a little bit there, um, it's, it's really clear that when this was put together, right, wrong, or otherwise, it was intended to say, "This is part of the package we can, we can do and make sure that it's ready for the development", without question. You know, certainly, there's nothing that would prevent the city, uh, in any way from recovering that cost, as we would possibly under an old policy, uh, that's a policy choice. This really wasn't intended to do that, it was intended to more hit that development-ready and not put the burden on, uh, with the thought that, one, if, if we do decide to recover, we're going to have to get into a whole lot of criteria. Um, now, one thing to add, speaking of that, is that we did check, and we have, with the jobs here, we have, they're non-existing, and 16 jobs that are to be created within five years that would meet the quality job, and we've, we've kind of said even though, well, we have formalized in our strategic plan, but we've said we want to only incentivize, uh, projects with jobs that would meet quality or premier levels. This does do that, so keep that in mind. Um, but really, the intent is to try to be out in front of it and have the site ready, so it's, it's good to go with development, and so it's a little different approach, um, rather than to put the cost burden on there. Doesn't mean that we have to do that, and, and there's no, I mean, from a policy perspective, there's no restriction placed, self-imposed on the governing body or anything like that, but that was, that was the, the approach, is to get out ahead, get lots ready. Uh, this one kind of fell a little bit behind in timeline, but only because the issue really kind of evolved from where they started in the first place, otherwise, we would have tried to be more out ahead of it. Right now, we're in the process of looking and prioritizing various sites to the community that we believe are, are oriented towards, uh, manufacturing and industrial development and so forth, and then think, and then really inventory and say, "What are the criteria to be development-ready?", which includes water, wastewater, includes stormwater, includes street access, excuse me, and a few other things, and then try to figure out, and end up bringing that back to you to say, "Where, does it make sense today to invest in those properties, or are we in a position to do what we might call a just-in-time approach if we have a prospect?". So, we're, it's sort of an evolution of that, and, but this was really the first formal step in that evolution that we've taken.
So, if a, um, client came in and they decided they'd like to be situated beside Veris, say, um, the cost to them to procure that land, to buy the land, say, uh, would be just the cost of the land, not of the cost of the water line? Is that correct?
I would say unless we, um, put together what would be a, a cost recovery mechanism there, that could be our, our other approach that we have, uh, the answer is yes. Now, we could do that if we, for example, if we, uh, said, we, if you have quality or premier level jobs, no problem, if you don't, we'd like you to pay, then we'd want to put some form of a cost recovery for that particular, uh, purpose. That does get a little bit difficult when we think about what number, is it a majority, is it not, that type of thing? Um, but, yeah, certainly, we could do that, and I will say, uh, if we go back, and I think, uh, Mr. Rogers could answer this better, but given the nature of most of the jobs that have been recruited- given the nature of most of the jobs that have been recruited and/or expanded in that area, I, I would say that it's probably pretty safe to say by far majority or a, a large majority wouldn't meet the quality standard, just by virtue of the history we've seen out there. So I don't think there's a big risk of that.
Was that a would or would not?
Would, would meet, would meet the quality standard, at least the quality standard.
Any other questions for staff?
You know what, just one, real quick one, and maybe the, maybe someone else can answer this as well. In the November 18th meeting, it was, a date was thrown out as August, August 2014 that, that construction and so on would likely be completed and so on. Is that, does this affect that at all because they set that date before they knew what the water requirements were going to?
Our intent is to have this constructed and ready for use by August 1st.
Okay.
So we've been talking with the general contractor and about driveways and the work they have done and coordinate and so that we'll meet their needs.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Tasker. Any comments from the public on this issue? Now that I bring it back to the commissioner for a possible action?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize staff to solicit bids for the Vortex Avenue Waterline Project Number 14-3033.
Second.
Have a motion to second to authorize funds for the Vortex Avenue Waterline City Project Number 14-3033. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Ma'am, I saw you had your hand up, was there another, was there something in the consent agenda you wanted to talk about? We don't normally do it, but, but today, go ahead, I haven't seen you to meeting before, so you've obviously taken time out of your day to come in, so please.
Yeah, this is my first time here, so I was kind of hesitant about, about coming up and then I raised my hand. Sorry, I apologize. My name is Norma Linderberger, 1111 Tally Drive here in Salina. I'm a five-time author and a published poet and that, my poem is upstairs where they're recognizing the city and county employees and I went up there and looked at it and so I am going to appreciate when they put it on television live, like tomorrow morning, I think, or Saturday night at 8 o'clock or something, I'll be kind of looking forward to that. I will read it, it won't take me too long, ma'am.
Sure.
The employee. E is for the effort you have displayed. M is for the manner you have conveyed. P is for the punctuality to which you did adhere. L is for the leadership yourself and your fellow peers. O is for the orders to which you did comply. Y is for the yesterdays that have passed on by. E is for the endeavor to achieve one's goal. E is for the endurance you did uphold. Norma Linderberger, author, poet.
And when will, these, these will be on the community access TV, you said?
Yeah, I believe tomorrow morning at 7:00 and then Saturday night at 8:00 PM.
Okay, so tomorrow morning, you say tomorrow morning at 7:00, tomorrow evening 8:00? And it's a variety of local poets or?
As far as I know, looking around, it's just myself.
Maybe yourself then.
Right, right, and then I'll buy a DVD, a tape, I think, two weeks from today. A young man told me back here.
Great, well, thank you for coming up. Like I said, I, I saw you raise your hand there and I know sometimes if you're new to the meetings, the, the format kind of passes you by and so.
Uh huh, well, thank you for having me come up a little bit later.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you so much. And back to the next item was, I believe was 6-4, is that was the other item pulled out, was that correct?
6-3.
6-3, I'm sorry. 6-3. Dionne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would open it up to questions or if you want me to go through the document itself, whatever would be easiest?
That's not necessary. The only questions I had were in regard to the, the contract format.
Okay.
Which I found a little bit, I guess antiquated perhaps, and I was going to ask a question about that. I, I found some language that was not gender neutral, for instance, and, and also some phrases like war clause, which I don't, I don't know if that's still appropriate or if that's changed or how it's changed, and so I, I was just going to inquire about that in terms of how we put our contracts together and, and does anyone review them every now and then to determine whether or not they're still appropriate?
Sure.
Want me to ask some of that?
Sure. If I may. Mr. Biggs, do you want to jump in and all?
Jump on in.
I'll take that opportunity if I may, and I, I do appreciate the opportunity because it, it is, I think, an opportunity to explain where we are in that process. And your point is well taken about there are some antiquated male pronouns in certain of those sections that we need to get rid of. The process that is underway, and maybe you've noticed it as you've looked at your agenda items, at the city manager's direction, we have been working on a process whereby we as legal counsel are involved, but a system that enables the departments and staff to be principally involved in the development of the documents. I think if you look at the base document there on this particular item and any that you might have seen recently either involving contractors or consultants, you'll see the base document uses defined terms and I don't believe, we, we will have erred if you will find any gender-based, well, I think we've pretty well eliminated the use of pronouns in those documents and defined, defined terms like contractor and consultant so that you consistently refer to who it is that you're speaking of and, and you don't have to use male, female, any, you know, that's, that's kind of the current, I think, the current style is to try to get away from the use of pronouns as much as possible so that you don't get in those gender-specific situations and where you can use plural nouns and then use their and use plural pronouns as well to get away from that situation. Admittedly, on those general clauses, work has been done on those general clauses, but they are a work in process and the points that you make, the sections that we've had a chance to look at since you raised the point, are those that I think we can, we had not worked on them substantively yet and that's usually what has been driving the work on elimination of any of the gender-specific pronouns, but this, I think emphasizes the point that we need to get maybe not let the substantive work lead that charge and that we go ahead and just anywhere where we can and in some of those remaining sections where we'll still need to do a little more work on the substance to go ahead and just get rid of the gender-specific pronouns. So your, your point is well taken, but that's where we are in the process, as I say, to get to a point where frankly there is a minimization of legal time and expense and a standardization, but that's where we are in the process.
Oh, I have another question tip of my tongue, it escapes me at the moment.
Thank you for, for bringing that up, Commissioner Hardy.
What a nice guy.
That was great. You did.
It's important.
It is.
Very good.
No, that's it, I think that's it.
Well, since the door's open, let me ask a couple of questions.
Can I raise my hand?
Two things, one, in reading through here, it's a, there, are they 24 gauge standing seam? They're metal roofs.
Correct.
Is that standard throughout, I mean, how, how many shelters are there? These are 11, how many are there total?
In the whole system?
In the, well, in Lakewood first.
All, that's all of them.
All 11. Okay, and then what about the system?
I couldn't answer off the top of my head in the system, but to answer your question, yes, that is the new standard that we would utilize for all the shelters.
Okay, so we're going to go to a, okay.
Correct.
Good deal. And then the other thing is, is this is, this is a concern of mine since this is going to be ongoing construction and we're now into the period where people are going to be using the park quite a bit more, and that is, is on, on the maintenance, maintenance of the project site. I just think it's critical that we make sure that as they're performing this work that, that the job sites are kept clean, not only for appearances sake, but it's going to be a lot of kids playing in these things and sometimes with stuff laying around, it can be a little bit dangerous, so. I know a lot of times that gets neglected, I just hope that we'll be extra aware that that's.
We absolutely agree, and if you look in the contract, we have some language in there specific to that.
Yeah, I have, here on number 48 here, the.
Yeah, we, we definitely agree with you and certainly want to make sure that it's safe for use and also at the same time that we don't take a bunch out at a single time where we don't have capacity or availability, so we'll try to be strategic about how we do that, because we have a piece in that as well where facilities will also be replacing some of the beams when the roof is exposed because that's the time to do it. So we'll take that opportunity to try to make sure that we sequence things properly and do it where it has a minimal impact, if you will, on the, on the public.
All right.
I just remembered.
Okay.
I noticed that there was no bond requirement on this contract, is that because of the dollar limit involved?
We, we've had a, an internal threshold of basically 50,000 for, for the performance bond, if you will, so I think there was some, some research done on that and, you know, we had looked at some different pieces and that kind of came to, that is what we came to the point where we thought that was the, the break-even point, I think statutorily, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe is 100,000 is what the requirement would be, so we're technically under that as well, but that's, that's where we currently stand. I don't know if Jason has something to add there?
Yeah, your, your comment is actually correct, is, is very correct in the sense that, you know, $50,000 project, our threshold, and this is of course half of that, less than half of that, but that seems like a big project to the general public from a contractor perspective, that's pretty small. And the smaller the project, the more burdensome as the cost of bonding, performance bond, statutory bond, bid bonds, things like that become, and so that's why we decided that the statutorily, anything 100,000 or more would have to have a statutory bond, which is a payment bond. And typically those are kind of bought for the same price, you can separate them, but in the market you kind of buy them for the same price. We still want to be more conservative than that and bring that down to 50, but we really felt 23, I guess 23,000 dollars somewhere in there was probably too low.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Dionne. Any other public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I would bring it back for a possible action.
I move we award the contract for the roof replacement at Lakewood Park to Midwest Siding in the amount of 23,100 for project number 14-3034.
Second.
Have a motion to second to award contract for roof replacement of Levin's Shelter Houses in Lakewood Park, project number 14-3035 to Midwest Siding, according to the amount of 23,100 dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion.
Just a quick correction, is that 3034 or 3035?
I have 3035.
I have 3034.
I believe it's 35. There was a correction made when the original blue sheet went in and I didn't realize they had changed it to 35, so that's my mistake because I submitted a new one this morning.
We had the amended here.
So it is 35, I believe is correct.
I still vote aye.
Okay. That motion then carries 5-0. Moving on to administration.
7.1, second reading ordinance number 14-10735, amending chapter 13, sections 13-1, 13-2, 13-58 through 13-60, 13-131, 13-141, 13-147 and 13-149 of the Salina Code pertaining to the renaming of the Human Relations Department to the Community Relations Department.
Ordinance number 14-10735 was passed on first Friday, April 28, 2014. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any comments or questions from the commissioner on this? Any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'd bring it back for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 14-10735.
Second.
Have a motion to second to pass on second reading ordinance number 14-7035. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Householder.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0.
7.2, resolution number 14-7098, approving an incentive request from La Cane Groceries LLC for sales tax reimbursement in the amount not to exceed 250,000 dollars.
Mr. Scrage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I believe you're well aware of the, the history of the Dillon's Grocery Store there on Iron, but as a little bit of background, the, the neighborhood Dillon's Grocery Store located at 511 East Iron was closed in conjunction with their opening of their, their superstore located at Ohio and Cloud. And so following the announcement of that, their intention to close, there was a very concerted effort on the part of the North Salina Group and, and the neighborhood and the Chamber of Commerce and, and some local private investors as well as the, the ultimate landlord to try to find a way to, to locate a neighborhood grocery store back in that, that location. As a little bit of acknowledgement as well as background, I spoke with, with John Gunn who was one of the, the driving forces and kind of the citizen initiative and, and I'll certainly defer to him if he wants to elaborate, but he, he identified that at the time, he, he wanted to be helpful in, in getting a grocer back downtown after Dillon's made their decision and that he got involved talking to different grocers and, and realized that a way to kind of incentivize them and get their attention to locate there would be to, to identify some financial incentives. And so he took the initiative of working with the building buyer and potential franchisees and, and attempted to raise money to help cover costs and, and be an enticement to a possible franchisee. And he contacted people to see if they'd be willing to help in that endeavor and he found people very open and willing to participate and they raised funds and contributed funds to that initiative, which ultimately then was put towards the, the Save Lot project that we're talking about today. So there was investment from the building purchaser combined with the funds that, that Mr. Gunn raised and he indicated the support was overwhelming. I always hesitate to give credit for fear that I'm going to miss someone, but my understanding of, of the key players that, that helped in that were obviously John Gunn and Kristen Gunn, other donors included Roy and Donnis Applequest, the Earl Bane Foundation, Mike and Debbie Berkeley, First Bank of Kansas, Catron, Randy and Frida Mai Weiss, Sid and Suzie Ritz, GeoProbe and the McCune Foundation, and then I also know that people that were actively involved in, in kind of the information gathering and brokering include Wally Story, the real estate broker, Bob Miller from Bus Boomin Row, Dennis Lover from the Chamber of Commerce. So this definitely was a, a community effort. Having said that, those efforts then allowed us to reach out and make contact with La Cane Grocers LLC who is a Save Lot franchisee and, and they worked closely with the property ownership group, the real estate broker and the chamber and city staff to pursue that location and work out the details. Those efforts included going the extra step of designing and cost estimating capital improvements to the facility so that they could very definitively quantify the cost that would be necessary in terms of renovating the facility, and those costs ultimately were, agreed to be carried by the landlord and, you know, there are different ways to do that, but the, the landlord in this case agreed to make that investment and be reimbursed as part of the lease rate. So at this point, the, the city's involvement or the request of the city is to help fund the remaining financial gap. And I, I would tell you that our approach to economic development is rather than respond to the question, question on the front end, and I'm not saying that was the approach in this particular project, but just in a general sense, if we're asked, well, what incentives are available, our approach is, let's talk about the project and let's identify a gap and then see what, what tools might be available to, to address that gap. And so in this particular case, after all the other initiatives took place that I described, there's an identified gap of 250,000 dollars and that was the, the basis of the request that's before you today. So city staff reviewed various tools and approaches that might be available and ended up working with La Cane Grocers with the sales tax reimbursement, which is a pay-as-you-go approach. I'll get into the mechanics of it a little bit later, but I think it has value in that it is a pay-as-you-go approach. It is funded out of proceeds generated by the project itself. It doesn't represent an unsecured commitment on our part. And so there's a couple of housekeeping items that I want to be sure to, to cover. One is that I want to be sure to clarify a particular concept that, that's in the written staff report as well as a resolution. In multiple places, references made to the relationship between the negotiated lease rate and the incentive request. As I mentioned, the financial responsibility for the building improvements can either rest with the tenant or the landlord depending on the terms reached by the parties. In this particular case, landlord agreed to finance certain improvements and, and then be reimbursed over time through the lease rate. Staff has not been involved in the lease rate discussions or negotiations and we're not aware of the actual agreed-upon rate. And so we are in no way suggesting the rate is unreasonable or excessive and needs to be subsidized. The, the point that we're trying to make is that the landlord was willing to front the costs on the front end and that the capital investments that we're talking about are to be recouped over time through the lease rate, and that represents an example of a tangible investment in the community. It's, the point is that it relates to that incentive and the capital investment and the build, and those costs far exceed the incentive that's being requested and that the investment will have a lasting impact in the community. Put more directly, I guess, the incentive can reasonably be viewed as an investment in the building and not an unsecured operational subsidy to an individual commercial operator. So the point in, in those connections between the lease rate and, and the incentive was just that, it's an investment in, in a capital item ultimately by way of the lease rate, not an editorial comment about the lease rate. One other housekeeping item, the, as part of the conversations with La Cane Grocers and with the North Salina Group, there was. with LaCani Grocers and with the North Salina Group, there was interest in, on our, on the community's part, in conducting an additional fundraising campaign if the project goes forward and is successful. And so, condition two of the resolution is intended to address that, and there was an additional suggestion made today that I think is reasonable, and it has been incorporated and highlighted in the copy that you have. And that is, an additional sentence at the end of the second condition that says, "The city's sales tax reimbursement obligation shall not be reduced by any amounts fundraised, either by collection or pledge, prior to the date of this agreement." And that's in addition to the original language that acknowledged that the reduction was only for fundraising afterwards. The, the significance of that is there has been a community fundraising effort. The intention isn't that, that the sales tax reimbursement be offset by that. It would only be the more grassroots fundraising effort that might occur from this point forward. And so, we're just trying to assure the LaCani Grocers and, and their investment group exactly how that'll be applied. And the other item, housekeeping item, is that the signature block has been changed to correspond with the blue sheet, so it has Mayor Aaron Householders signing, rather than the city manager. Moving back to the blue sheet, in terms of conformance with the strategic plan, we identified that it's consistent with our goal that Salina be in a city that's exciting to live in, thriving economically and socially. It contributes to a city being clean, attractive, and inviting, and it's also consistent with the commission's goal to have committed to providing the highest quality city services possible within available resources. As far as the fiscal note, if authorized, as I mentioned, this fund, this request would be funded from reimbursement of Save-A-Lot's sales tax proceeds that they generate at their location, and be distributed to Save-A-Lot within 30 days of the close of each calendar quarter, that the, the city local option sales tax proceeds are received from the immediately preceding calendar quarter. And so, it would be processed through the Kansas Department of Revenue. It's specific to just the city's portion of the, of the sales tax, and as you might have noticed in the agreement, it, the agreement acknowledges that our sales tax rate may fluctuate. It's whatever the resulting available proceeds are will be passed through. It's to be applied to the 511 East Iron location for a term of 10 years, until the principal amount of $250,000 has been distributed, whichever occurs first. And as you may have also noted in the agreement, it is specific to operation of a Save-A-Lot franchise by LaCani Grocers at this particular location. It's an a pay-as-you-go distribution of actual sales tax proceeds generated and collected, and it does represent a reallocation of sales tax funds, but does not represent a financial risk in that it's not an unfunded commitment on the part of the city. So, having said all that, the Salina, this item went to the Salina Economic Development Incentives Council, and they recommended proceeding with the, the requested sales tax reimbursement, and staff has identified for your consideration four item, four alternatives. One would be to approve the incentive request in the amount not to exceed $250,000 to stimulate capital investment in the grocery store building located at 511 East Iron, as well as the operating, and, opening and operation of a neighborhood grocery store at that location in accordance with the attached agreement, and to approve resolution number 14-7098. The second alternative would be to vote to approve the request and the resolution with any amendments that you might feel are appropriate. The third item would be to vote to postpone consideration of this request to a specified date. And the fourth item, which is also numbered, item is number, number three in the blue sheet I just noticed, is to vote to deny the incentive request and the attached agreement and resolution. So, having provided all that, I do want to acknowledge that, that John Gunn is in the audience, Guy Walker is here as well, and the representatives of the franchise, Hanif LaCani, are here as well. So, they might wish to address you, or certainly be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff before we bring up applicants or interested parties? Okay, well, anyone who, I think, wanna hear, I guess, maybe from the applicant first, or any representatives who wanna come up and address the commission?
I think that would be Hanif.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Hanif LaCani, and I own LaCani Grocers, and we just would be excited to be in Salina and open the Save-A-Lot location at that location.
Great.
And we think it'd be a great location.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
How many locations do you currently have?
We currently have convenience stores and gas stations in Kansas City, and this would be our first Save-A-Lot. We have been financially approved by Save-A-Lot to open their first location.
All right. Is this the direction you're starting to go?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's our new company direction. Our plan is to open a few more locations, but this would be first location.
So, you're out of Kansas City?
That's correct.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the applicant's group?
I think everyone else just intends to answer questions if necessary.
They come up, great.
Okay.
Any public comment on this issue? Sure. Just state your name and address, if you would, please.
Chris Trent, 912 East Ash. I think it'd be a good idea, we have a grocery store back down, at this in the town, because I live on East Ash, and I see a lot of elderly ladies that get out, and they used to go there when Dillon's was there, and then I see a lot of people in wheelchairs. That'd be convenient for them that lives up in this area. So, I think it'd be a good idea if we get this grocery store in town. I'd be really happy, along with other people. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming.
Nice to hear something positive.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm Barbara Young with North Salina Community Development, also with Triad Manufacturing, 1100 West Grand. I have here, you guys have probably seen this a couple of times before, approximately 3,000 signatures asking that something be put back in the Dillon's store on East Iron. And so, I think that kinda speaks to the volume of the support this, this will have, and I think we're all very excited to see Save-A-Lot come in and do business.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thanks. Any other public comment on this issue? Any more discussion on the part of the commission?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, and then a discussion following a second.
Sounds good.
Perhaps. Mr. Mayor, I move to improve the sales, to move the incentive request for sales tax reimbursement in the amount not to exceed $250,000 to stimulate capital investment in the grocery store building located at 511 East Iron Avenue, as well as the opening and operation of a neighborhood grocery store at that location in accordance with the attached economic development grant offer and agreement by, I'm sorry here, and to approve resolution number 14-7098.
Second.
Second.
It sounded like there was gonna be some discussion, so we'll just pause before, before we vote, and let anybody who has comments or discussions to go on.
Yeah, I would just like to thank the building, the, the folks that purchased the building, and the ownership group of the building, and all the hard work put together by the partners, Mr. Gunn, and all of the hard work I know that you did in putting together the investment group, and, and sticking with the idea of really doing something extremely beneficial for the, for that neighborhood. As Ms. Young spoke about 3,000 people signing a petition, and that petition was to support a neighborhood grocery store in that location, and to help any potential investor, building owner, and operator, to show them that this store would have broad community support. In, in the short week since, or even less than a week, five days since the news came out, I've had so many comments from people around the community that are really excited about shopping at Save-A-Lot. So, the comments range from, "It's great to have a store in there, and, man, I'm really curious about what Save-A-Lot has," and, and so, there's, there's a lot of interest. And then, just to speak to the, the fundraising part from the North Salina Group part, that's really not, I think, intended to provide a huge dollar amount of, of money to help pay down part of the city's incentive. That would be great if it did, but more than anything, it's to help to tap back into that spirit of just the support that the community will maybe be able to have to come together to, in the next six months that lead up to the construction, that kinda keep the excitement alive, and, and keep everybody reminded that as a community, we really dedicated ourselves to support this venture, and, and so, finally, I'd like to thank the operators for taking a chance, and, and for your comment of, of saying that you're excited to, to open your business in Salina. So, we appreciate that. We wish you the best of luck, and, and I know that this community will get out and support that store. So, thank you all very much.
Great. This topic has taken a long time to, to get from the beginning stage, the discussion stage, to the decision stage, but in my mind, it's one of the easiest decisions that we could make for Salina. For me, it's what, what you call a no-brainer. To have a grocery store back on East Iron makes all the sense in the world, not only for the people that, in that neighborhood that need a grocery store close by so they can walk to and from the store to buy their groceries, but also, there's a substantial amount of drive-by traffic going in different directions that, and I've heard as much from most people as I had from the people in the neighborhood, that really miss that store, and did not want to drive the extra two miles to a, a different grocery store on their way home from work. And, and so, I think this is going to be a, a great asset for the community, and I, I wish you all the success in the world with it.
I also would like to comment that I was there during the petition signing that night, and people were so disappointed that they thought we weren't gonna get a store. It also adds, I think, some credence to the fact that we wanna redo East Iron Avenue. So, that'll look, that'll help that area, bring that area up quite a bit.
You know, we did have, I, one question I forgot to ask, and no one else brought it up. Do we have an estimated time on when you wanna start this, and a, a date when you wanna finish and maybe open? If you don't mind coming back up, I'm sorry. We didn't talk about any of that.
Overall, construction should take anywhere from five to six months, so we should be open this year, about towards the end of the year.
Okay, so you're wanting to move pretty quick on this. Good.
We're ready to move forward.
Good deal. Thank you.
I would just add, again, I echo what, what my other commissioners have, have said. This really go, and of course, I can't thank the, the people who, who took time themselves to volunteer and spearhead this. I know Mr. Gunn was involved heavily. It, it goes to what this commission has all been about, and that is reutilizing the areas of town. There was a big fear that there would just be a void where that store was. And we've got a pharmacy there, we've got a, we've got a laundromat, I believe there's still a hair salon over there, and, and we really like the idea of aggregating properties together, and it's so much better than expanding and building new streets, and putting in new infrastructure. And, and, and I would echo again, it's not just serving, what this, this gentleman was saying, the people that are there, the elderly, it's, it's gonna be great for them, because there are two, I think John's Town Towers, and, and the other one, they're very close proximity. But I use it. My business is over on State Street, I live up on Pine Ridge, and I pass it every day, and it was my little grocery store, it was the right size. I didn't have to go in and fight through tons and tons of traffic, and it was just the right size. You know, I'm, we're a small family, so we don't need the, the truckload of, of stuff. So, I'm real excited. I would put in my request early that I'm gonna need you guys to stock Monster Cereals, because I have to order it on Amazon right now, but...
Like Frankenberry?
Yeah, Franken, actually Boo Berry's my favorite. So, if I gotta sell on one, Boo Berry's my favorite.
Who knew?
But, I don't get it very often. But, I, I really am excited about it, and, and I know John, he has not taken the credit for it, but I know early on, he was over there helping with the, the, the signature gathering and a lot of things. There's just been a lot of people in the community who, who really look forward to this. It's, it's a classic Salina location. I know I've mentioned trying to bring the neon of some sort, I don't know what Save-A-Lot's rules are, but I'd love to see that neon back on there again. I used to like driving by at night, it just reminded me of, of an era of, of days past that I really liked, and, and maybe something in the future can happen there, but I really look forward to it. I think Salina's gonna benefit greatly, and I appreciate you taking the chance, and our community, I think I'd be happy you did. So, with that, if there's no other comments or questions, or anything from there, I'd... We have, I believe, a motion of second to approve the incentive request for sales tax reimbursement in an amount not to exceed $250,000 to stimulate capital investment in the grocery store building located at 511 East Iron Avenue, as well as the opening and operation of a neighborhood grocery store at that location in accordance with the attached economic development grant offer and agreement by voting to authorize the mayor, myself, to develop grant offer and agreement by voting to authorize the mayor. That just feels so weird to say, to execute, to execute the attached Salina Economic Development Sales Tax Reimbursement Agreement, and approve resolution number 14-7098. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Yes, thank you very much. That moves us. I've gotta learn how to say that. That's weird saying my own business, and no development business. Any other business today? I, I see we have an executive session, possibly? No?
You want to say?
Whoa.
Other business? Oh, you know, just a quick, just a quick note about, in, in other business here. Just a quick comment and thank you to North Salina Community Development Group, and members of city staff that were involved in the unveiling of the public art piece on North Ninth and North Broadway at the Five Corners location. It was a great event, attended by about 60 people, and then a reception at Dick Bergen Studio on North Santa Fe afterward. It was a really nice occasion to pretty much celebrate the art and work of the artist, Larry Mydl, who unfortunately has passed away, I think about 20 years ago. But, there was about 40 members of his family and residents of Western Kansas in town yesterday to, to attend. And so, I think it's safe to say there, there are about 40 people plus now in Western Kansas that love Salina. So, it was a nice event, it was, it was, it was a beautiful day. We had a great turnout, and a lot of work and effort went to that, went into that, and it's turned out really nice, and I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for being there as well. And I know that it really meant a lot to Mr. Mydl's elderly mother, and I don't know how old she was, but she, she's in her 90s, I'm sure. And, 95?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. I'm sorry, Ms. Mydl.
Whoa.
I was gonna say, she didn't look a day over 84, but, yeah.
Oops. Okay, so I'm gonna stop now. But anyway, it, I, I know it made her day, and, and their family was extremely proud, and, and they just, and, and also our, our local relatives, Nancy Bassett and her family, and Greg Stevenson and his family, who were cousins. It was just a great day. So, thanks, thanks to everybody that made that possible.
I move to recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:40?
Second.
I have a motion of second to move into executive session for 30 minutes and reconvene at 5:40. Do we anticipate any business after this?
We do not.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're in executive session for 30 minutes?